Good evening. Thank you all for attending the July 16, 2025 School Board Meeting that is called to order at 6:30. Let the minute show that all members are present except for Mr. Ben Morales, work-related. Ms. Cristo Ramirez, could you please be there on the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and individual.
Our vision statement: Working together, Fabens ISD creates a positive and lasting impact through multiple learning opportunities. Mission statement: All students of the district will be prepared to be successful lifelong global learners. Our first item on the agenda, Fabens ISD Superintendent Recognitions and Monthly Updates presented by Ms. Sofia Maciel.
Good evening, President, Board President, Mr. Estrada, Superintendent Dr. Segovia, Board Members and Community. My name is Sofia Maciel. I'm the media specialist and I am presenting the recognitions for this month. First up is going to be our video.
Hello and welcome to this month's superintendent update. We are here with Elizabeth Ramirez, our district health coordinator, and to welcome our brand-new Fabens Middle School nurse, Ms. Laura Lara, who's coming to us with almost 30 years of experience and has worked in the Fabens community previously.
Hi, I am excited to come back to the community. I can't wait to see all of you.
And on that note, we are also here to discuss a program with Emergence Health Network. So over to Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you, Sofia. We're also very excited to have Nurse Lara back in our district. She's a great nurse, comes with a lot of experience, and I know you guys will be very happy to have her. But I am here to talk about our Emergence Health Network program. For some of you that aren't aware of our program, we do have Emergence Health Network in every campus in the district, and they provide mental health services, counseling, coordinator services, case management. They also provide tele-psychiatric services for those students that need assistance with medication or need to see a psychiatrist. You can also see it from the comfort of your campus. You don't need to go anymore to the facility. You can do it here in the campus. We are one of three districts in the city that has Emergence Health Network in our campuses, and we are the first district to actually have Emergence Health Network available to all the students in every single campus. So we're very excited about this new program that Emergence is pushing out. We know sometimes it could be a little bit of lag time between the time that the referral goes in and the appointment can be scheduled, either because we're having difficulty getting consent forms from parents or parents are having a hard time reaching Emergence to make the appointment. So now the parents can actually self-refer their students. If you feel that your student's in need of any mental health services, if you're not sure if they need it, but think that they could possibly benefit from the services, you can also self-refer. What we're going to have is we're going to have some posters, and they're going to have a QR code where you can scan the QR code and you can actually reach Emergence through that and refer your students yourself. So we're very excited. We're very grateful to also have Emergence Health Network here in our district.
Absolutely. And on that note, here is your update.
I just want to invite you all to our community event. This is a new event that we have. It's a back-to-school event in which we're going to be providing backpacks, school supplies, diapers. We're going to have immunizations. We're going to have free haircuts and many more resources. I invite you to come on July 19. It's going to be at the Fabens Elementary from 8:00 in the morning to 11:00 a.m. Please make sure to be here. We're going to be waiting for you. Everyone is invited. It's not just for our Fabens community, it's for everybody.
At Fabens High School, the Back on Track program was in full swing over the summer. With hands-on learning, real-world skills, and strong support from our school resource officers, our walkouts learn essential skills such as CPR and stop the bleed, as seen in the video, plus so much more.
So how I feel about winning the TASK Assistant Principal Award for Region 19 is very honored to represent the district that I've worked for for the past three years, but also am a product of. I feel very, not only honored to represent Fabens, but to represent El Paso. What will happen is I'll compete against the other 19 because with myself we'll make 20 candidates for the Assistant Principal of the Year for Texas. So I'll compete against them next June in Dallas. I am very grateful to be able to represent Fabens Middle School at the state level, but also knowing that I'm a product of this community, and I hope it shows all the students that no matter what, we can have big dreams and fulfill them.
The 2025 migrant camp was a powerful week of learning and connection. Students explored STEM through hands-on activities, built friendships, and even got to go to the zoo and La Nube.
It's honestly surreal. I never imagined receiving something like the Muckin Award. It's incredibly humbling, and I still feel like I'm just doing what I love, teaching and supporting my students. To be recognized on this level is an honor, but it also reminds me of the responsibility that we carry as educators to continue growing, advocating, and inspiring. It's been an emotional and inspiring journey. The support from my community, the school, and also my fellow educators has been overwhelming in the best way. The award opened doors to connect with other passionate teachers and reminded me why I started this journey in the first place, and that's to make a difference. I feel motivated more than ever to keep pushing forward for my students and for my profession.
Thank you so much. And at this time, I would like to recognize Ms. Rachel Peña. It is an honor this evening to recognize one of Fabens ISD's most dedicated and inspiring leaders. She is the Assistant Principal at Fabens Middle School. She has recently been named the Region 19 Assistant Principal of the Year by the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, or TASP. And this is a recognition that comes from her peers. And I would like to invite Mr. Justin Kleist to the podium so that he can say a few words.
Good evening, Dr. Segovia, Board President Estrada, Board Members, members of the community. I am psyched to be here today to be able to congratulate someone who's truly amazing on our campus, Ms. Peña. As you know, she's just been named the TASP Region 19 Assistant Principal of the Year for the 2025-26 school year. And I think to really understand this honor, we have to think about Region 19, right? We have to think about all the districts in Region 19. We have to think about all the amazing assistant principals, right, from this region. Region 19 covers 6,000 square miles, right, of school districts. From El Paso ISD, all the assistant principals from El Paso ISD, Socorro ISD, Isleta ISD, Canatío ISD, Clint's, Anthony, Torneo, San Eli, from Dell City, from Fort Hancock, all the way to Sierra Blanca, Ms. Peña was recognized as the Assistant Principal of the Year, right, from all of that. So just understanding that context helps us to put into perspective for us. Even understanding that she's one of 20 out of the state of Texas of middle school assistant principals who've received this recognition. And I just want to say, Ms. Peña, I just want to thank you for everything that you've done for Fabens Middle School. You, you're a rock and a foundation there, right? And just knowing that you're there, I'm being honest, like just knowing that you're there is just like, I know Ms. Peña is there. We got this. You're just an amazing team of others. So I just want to, I want to thank you for being supportive, dedicated, just a writer, a team member, and then everything that you've done for us and our students.
So on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Ms. Peña will now be recognized. Thank you so much.
Ms. Sir, do we have anybody that signed up for Open Firm?
No one.
Nobody has signed up for Open Firm? We'll skip the communication and visitors. Next item on the agenda, 2025-2026 New Hires presented by Ms. Aida Polanco, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Board President Estrada, Superintendent Dr. Segovia, Board of Trustees and Community. My name is Aida Polanco, Director of Human Resources. And this evening, it brings me great pleasure to introduce Ms. Laura Lara, nurse at the middle school. As you guys saw from the superintendent updates, unfortunately, she was not able to make it to the meeting tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is our Consent Agenda presented by our Superintendent Dr. Segovia.
Good evening, President Estrada, Board of Trustees, esteemed colleagues, and esteemed community. The administration recommends approval of the consent agenda items as presented in your board book.
I'll make a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Flores. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ornelas. Is there any discussion at this time? No discussion. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed on six oh. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, Discussion on Fabens ISD Legal Counsel Contract Services presented by Dr. Segovia and Mr. Anthony Soffe.
Good evening, President Estrada, Board of Trustees. Once again, we did invite Mr. Soffe to come and talk to us about the services it does provide for the district and so that you may ask any questions that you may have about the services he provides, and Mr. Soffe is here. So, Mrs. Soffe, welcome.
Thank you very much, Dr. Segovia. It's a pleasure to be here, President Estrada, trustees. My pleasure to be with you tonight. I was asked to say a little bit about our firm and our services. Our firm dates back to 1904. We have represented school districts since the 1950s. I have personally been involved in representing the Fabens School District since just around 1990. It's about 35 years now. I was talking to Dr. Segovia the other day. We were, I was trying to count up all the superintendents that have served as your superintendent since I've been involved representing the district. The first one was Jesse Gander, and that was back in the 1990s, early 1990s. It's been our pleasure to represent the district over the years. We've always, I think, demonstrated our loyalty to the district and specifically to the Board of Trustees. We've always done our best to provide to you the best quality legal services at a reasonable cost. We are always available to the Board President and to the superintendent, and by extension to the board, on whatever legal issues arise that we're asked for our input or guidance or opinion. We occasionally review contracts at the request of the administration. We provide advice on policy issues on request. We, of course, appear at board meetings when requested to do so on whatever issue the board feels that it needs legal advice on. It's always our pleasure to do so. It's not always me. Because we do represent other school districts that also have night meetings, and sometimes I have a scheduling conflict, which was the case a week or two ago. I was unable to come. I had a prior commitment to another school board, but Mrs. Bettis was able to come. And so we've always, you know, been able to have someone at the board meetings when requested. We, as part of our services, we, and of course at no charge, we have to keep up on educational law issues, which, as you know, change dramatically every couple of years at least with the legislative changes and more frequently than that with the federal law changes. And we've seen a lot of changes in the legislature this past session. And with the new administration, we're definitely seeing changes at the federal level. I will be traveling to Austin tomorrow for an all-day school law conference hosted by the Texas Association of School Boards Legal Division. Attendance is restricted to members of the Council of School Attorneys, which is exclusively made up of attorneys that represent school districts. There are no attorneys there other than attorneys that represent school districts. I'm a past chair of the Council of School Attorneys. I'm also a past chair of the School Law Section of the State Bar of Texas, and was personally very honored to receive its Lifetime Achievement Award in 2021, which was based on my career in representing school districts. And so we do believe that we are by far the best qualified firm in El Paso to provide services, legal services, to school districts. We're, we have a statewide reputation. We often get referrals from attorneys that need help with school district matters in other parts of the state. I have personally written on the order of, I don't have an exact count, 12 to 15 Amicus Curiae briefs or Friend of the Court briefs on behalf of the Texas Association of School Boards Legal Assistance Fund, which are designed to obtain decisions from the courts that are beneficials, beneficial to school districts. And so we take great pride in providing our services to school districts. And certainly Fabens Independent School District included among them as being one of our oldest school district clients and going now for 35 years at least. So I'd be pleased to answer any questions that any of the trustees may have. If there's something that you'd like for me to cover that I haven't covered, I'd be pleased to do so.
Any questions from any of the Board of Trustees?
Well, since I was the one that brought it up, sir, I don't have a question. I just want to thank you for your services. And the reason that I, I asked for it was so our community can know and we can be transparent and they know that whatever legal services we get or, you know, we, you're trying to help us to cover them. So that's the, that's what I have to say, sir.
Thank, thank you very much, Christian Ramirez. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a statement as well. So, I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to, you know, I'm just going to praise you here because I think you're the, and those of us that have been in the school business for a while know that this man here is the, probably the top school attorney in El Paso and probably in the state of Texas. And I know that you may disagree with me, but I was on the phone with TASP last week, spoke to an attorney by the, I think his last name was Smith. And I, I think it was Smith. Maybe, maybe I'm, no, Jones, Jones. Anyway, so I said, you know, I had a question. It's just a legal question. Of course, when, when you're on the school board, the board president and the superintendent have access to speak to our attorneys. And we've all had our turn, and there was something that wasn't that important that I needed to reach out to the, to the president or to the, to the superintendent. So I just, you know, that's, that's the nice thing about being a member of TASP, that we have the, we have the option to call TASP legal and that kind of stuff. And I mentioned, I was telling this guy, and I said, you know, I said, I don't know if you know our attorney, man, but I could give my right arm for this guy. He's a, he's a really, he's a top-notch attorney, and I'm just proud to know him and all this sort of stuff. A guy by the name of Anthony Soffe, I don't know, and he just starts, he chuckles and he says, I'd do the same for him. So, I mean, that's, that's just the, the quality of the person that we have as an attorney. I know I'm being funny, but when it comes to being professional and getting the job done legally, I mean, this is, you can, you just can't go wrong. And so I really appreciate you putting this on the agenda, just so that the community knows that we're, you know, we're well-represented. And this is, you know, in this day and time, in this day and time for the last 30, 40 years, you know, having good legal counsel is, we gotta have it. And if we don't have that, we, you have seen districts and just seen parties fall from, you know, they just fall behind it's just because they don't have good legal counsel. So that being said, Mr. Soffe, I could go on and on and on. Appreciate it. I wish I could speak to you, but I'm because of our, but that's okay. That's okay. I think that, that's, that makes perfect sense that it should only be, you know, the, the president and the suit. I think it makes really good sense, but you know, I know I can, I'll speak on just on behalf of myself, but I know former board members and a lot of board members here as well feel the same way. So I really appreciate your service and your dedication to Fabens ISD.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Flores.
Anybody else? No more questions. Thank you for all your service.
My pleasure to be here. May I be excused at this time? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Approval of Fabens ISD 2025-2026 Athletic Stipends presented by Mr. Jay Simpler.
Good evening, President Estrada, Dr. Segovia, and fellow board members. In your packet, I have a stipend sheet. We redid the stipends this year. We're just seeking approval for the stipend raises for our coaches. The stuff that is there in front of you, you'll see some items that are in red. Those are new positions that will be filled on a need basis for middle school. And just for the record, we did come in under budget, so we're not increasing the stipend list.
So actually, you're saying that nobody's getting a raise or?
Yes, some coaches are getting a raise. We are being competitive with a neighboring district that is close to the same size. So that's, that was the cutting of the pie that we did for, for our stipends.
And that won't affect our deficit that we're in, or is that included just in the new budget?
No, ma'am. This, this is, this is actually lower than our other budget that we had last year. So we kept the same number. We just, we just sliced up the stipends a little bit different. And it created an opportunity for us to, to reward our coaches.
I only have one thing that I forgot to mention, and I did notice here that everybody has about the same amount of a head coach, except our cross-country head coach. Is there any reason?
Most, that's competitive with our neighboring district. Our, our cross-country coaches are usually paid a little bit less. That's just following that. It's same thing with, with wrestling. The, the season is a little shorter. So that's just comparative to everybody else. It's not exclusive just to Fabens. It's, it's everywhere.
I would have thought it would probably be a little increase since they're the ones that have gone furthest in their,
Yes.
in their sports.
Yeah, he did, he did get an increase from what he had, that, that coaching position had last year. So it still is a little increase, but again, it is competitive with the rest of the city.
And the neighboring schools that you're talking about would be?
San Elizario. That was the closest neighboring school that we can compare to. We did take a look at Clint and the other school districts, but because of their size, their, their budget is a little bit bigger than ours.
Any other questions from Board of Trustees? We don't have any other questions. Do we have a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Athletic Stipends?
Recommendation, or are you only going to make the motion?
Yeah, you can make the motion.
Yes.
You want to make the?
The administration recommends approval of the 2025-2026 Athletic Stipends as presented.
I'll make a motion.
You have a motion by Mr. Flores. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, my Mr. Ornelas. If there's any other discussion, we now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Six oh. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and Action on Homeschooled Students/Athletes as Required in Senate Bill 401 presented by Coach Blair.
Thank you, School Board President Estrada, Dr. Segovia, and School Board. In front of you in your packet, you have the current explanation of Senate Bill 401. I'm going to read what we had from last year. Senate Bill 401 requires ISDs to formally opt out of the, of, by board action according, I'm sorry, allowing homeschool students the ability to participate in UIL activities. Last year, under the old law, in 24-25 school year, UIL required students, I'm sorry, schools to opt in by August 1st to allow homeschool participants, making those homeschool students eligible for varsity participation. Under the new law for 2025-26, homeschool students are eligible to participate in your ID, in your ISD unless your school board opts out. Homeschool students may participate in UIL activities at, at the schools closest to the student's residential address that does allow homeschool
Homeschool students may participate in UIL activities at, at the schools closest to the student's residential address that does allow homeschool participation. If the school, uh, if the school to which they are zoned opts out of homeschool participation. So I did highlight, um, according to the Texas High School Coach Association website, some bullet points that you can review in your packet. And just for understanding, last year, we did choose to Uh, opt in by not allowing homeschool students to participate. The difference this year is at the school board and our district must opt out. That's the only difference.
Okay. Opt out. That means that they can't play?
That they will not be allowed to participate. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And the reason being is, well, I guess it would be because For homeschool students, we don't get nothing, right?
We get zero funding for them. Yes, ma'am. That is correct. Zero funding. Uh, it's very hard for eligibility requirements, for practice requirements. Um, they basically are just allowed to come and participate and we must fund that participation in whatever sport that they're in. Um, so neighboring districts, I, I think I want to say almost every school in Region nineteen is choosing to opt out of this. Uh, so those homeschool students will not be allowed to participate in UIL activities. Um, the important thing to keep in mind is that, uh, if for some reason we choose to opt in, then all those others Uh, students that have been opted out from their districts can come participate and we would have to absorb all that cost.
And that's the thing, right, that if those students come and play, they get hurt here, we're liable for them and yet we have no funding.
Yes.
Just make it clear that that's the reason, because we get no funding and all.
That is correct. Along with eligibility, that's a, that's a big, a big part. We have no way to access their eligibility.
So, two things. So we don't get ADA from them, number one, right?
That's correct.
And then, because we're an open enrollment district, anybody that opts out somewhere else, they can send their kids to come play sports here.
Yes.
There's no advantage to, to Faben's ISD taxpayers or to the district at all, you know, so I don't, I mean, I'm-
Correct.
I think that's a no-brainer, you know?
As much as we would love for them to come and play, but we would love their parents to come and register them.
Exactly. Yes, yes. Come to register, yeah. Yeah, come to register and, and put them in the seat.
Counter attending, their attendance.
Need their attendance.
You pay, you play.
Any other questions? Board trustees?
Nothing. Uh, the administration recommends Faben ISD opt out of allowing homeschool student athletes from participation in UIL activities.
Do we have a motion to approve at this time?
Make the motion.
Mr. Spence makes a motion. Mr. Flotis makes a second. We have no other discussion. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six oh. Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Faben's ISD twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-seven bank depository bid number RFP zero seven zero three two five dash zero four one, presented by Ms. Lily Nunez.
Good evening, board president, Mr. Estrada, superintendent, Dr. Segovia, board members and community. My name is Lily Nunez and I am the director of finance. I am seeking your approval for our bank depository bid with West Star Bank. Our district posted our bank depository bid on June twelfth via online on our district's website. Additionally, as per TEA guidelines, the proposals were mailed out to two banks for their review. We had a timeframe for questions regarding our bid through June twentieth. No questions were submitted by any financial institution. The deadline for submissions of proposals was July third, twenty twenty-five. Only one bid proposal was submitted by West Star Bank, which is our current financial institution, on July third. At this time, the administration would like to recommend the award for bank depository services to West Star Bank as presented For an initial two-year contract to commence September first, twenty twenty-fifth through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
I'll make the motion. We have a motion by Mr. Flotis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nella. There's no further discussion. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six oh. Thank you, Ms. Nunez.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on Faben's ISD student and staff travel per diem rates, presented by Ms. Lily Nunez.
Good afternoon again. At this time, I am seeking your approval for student and staff travel meal per diem updates as presented. Our current travel per diem rates for students are at a much lower rate in comparison to other districts. Our current rate for breakfast, uh, is five dollars for lunch, seven dollars for dinner, and nine dollars totaling twenty-one dollars a day for student travel per diem, uh, meal per diem. The proposal is for an increase in breakfast to eight dollars, lunch to twelve dollars, dinner to fifteen dollars, total of thirty-five dollars. On our staff travel per diem, we currently follow two guidelines, one being local and one being federal. Our local gives us six dollars for breakfast, ten dollars for lunch, twenty for dinner totaling thirty-six dollars. Our federal is five dollars breakfast, ten dollars lunch, fifteen dollars dinner Totalling thirty dollars a day for staff members. We are proposing, uh, to follow our general services administration per diem rates issued by Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts To reimburse employees who travel in and out of our state, uh, for their meals. The first and last day of travel, of course, would be calculated at seventy-five percent, that of a full day maximum. Federal meal rates for traveling in Texas can be found at the state, uh, Texas State Comptroller's website. Now, if the reimbursement for meals exceeds the maximum allowed based on federal travel regulations, The difference must be paid from local funds as per the general services, um, administration. Non-overnight travel meal reimbursement is capped at thirty-six percent. Now, if you notice, we will not be following a local and federal policy. We will apply the same guidelines for both local travel and federal. This keeps us in compliance with our federal spending, meaning the guidelines that are presented by the Texas Comptroller are the guidelines approved By TEA for federal grant travel spending. So we would not have to worry about tracking two different rates depending on the funding of the travel. So at this time, uh, we would like to recommend your approval for student and traff- travel, uh, student and staff travel meal per diem updates as presented With an effective date of August first.
Is there any discussion at this time? Any questions for Ms. Nunez?
I'll make the motion. Oh, just asking.
Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Flotis. Second, second by Mr. Spence. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, approval of Faben's ISD purchases in excess of fifteen thousand, presented by Ms. Sylvia Nunez and Dr. April Calaviz.
Good evening, board president Estrada, uh, Dr. Segovia and trustees. Um, I'll start off with presenting the instructional programs that we purchased with federal funding. Um, I did pres- I did put a memo on there. These purchases are all above the fifteen thousand. They're all renewals, um, and they're all federally funded. And I, I know you've probably heard about the PAZEN federally And federal funds, but right now we have enough funding to be able to purchase them right now and carry us through, um, next year, September thirtieth. So the first one that we have on there is the Summit K twelve, which is our bilingual program. And then we have Imagine Learning, um, Edgenuity, which is our credit recovery program that we use at the high school. And then Rethink Ed, which is our counseling curriculum. All of these are federally funded and they're all included in our district improvement plan currently. Um, the next one that we, that we have that, that's included in your packet is the Edge Euphoria. This one is not federally funded. It's funded locally. Um, and you can see the total amount of the twenty-four thousand. This is the software that we use for our data tracking, um, to have all our employee evaluations, our teacher evaluations. We do all our local assessments on here. And then we also upload our state assessment data onto here. And if you don't have any questions, at this time, the administration recommends Approval of the following purchases exceeding fifteen thousand.
I have a question.
Sure.
Were we able to transfer all that information, all the data from, um, DMAC to Edge Euphoria already?
Yes.
So we're ready to go?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. We have no further questions. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Nella. Do we have a second? Second. Second by Mr. Flotis. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Motion passes six oh. Thank you, Mr. Flotis. Next item on the agenda, second reading and possible approval of the Texas Association of School Boards Tasby Board Policy Update one twenty-five affecting local policies, presented by Ms. Aida Polanco.
Good evening, board president Estrada, superintendent, Dr. Segovia, board of trustees and community. My name is Aida Polanco, Director of Human Resources. And this evening, I'm bringing forward the second reading of the Tasby Update one twenty-five, which is affecting The B D A A local officers and officials duties and requirements of board officers. B D B local board internal organization, board committees. B D F local board internal organization advisory committees. E I local academic achievements. F D E local admissions, school safety transfers, and F E C local attendance, attendance for credit. At this point, the administration would like to recommend, um, that we add, revise, or delete local policies as offered by Tasby Policy Service For consideration according to the instruction sheet for Tasby localized policy manual update one twenty-five.
I'll make the motion. We have a motion by Mr. Flotis. Do we have a second? We have a second. Is there any discussion at this time? No discussion. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six oh. Thank you, Mr. Flotis. Next item on the agenda, we'll be going into closed session. Per Texas Government Code five five one dot zero seven four for discussion on human resources director Pay scale duty, discussion on child nutrition director pay scale dash duty, Faben's High School Assistant Principal recommendation. Seven tenths.
Ready, Mr. Rosalda?
Thank you. At this time, eight seventeen, we recommend to open session for possible action announcement on the Fabians High School Assistant Principal.
Good evening, President Estrada, board trustees, colleagues. At this time, the administration recommends Ms. Mayela Sanchez-Serrano as the next AP at Fabians High School.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
We have a motion by Ms. Ronellas. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Judith Sepulveda. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six oh. Thank you. Next item.
No, Mr. Six point one point two, Human Research Director P. S. Gil Duiz.
Okay, so you don't make the recommendation or anything? No. So I make the motion to direct the superintendent as discussed in closed session.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Aye. We go to the next item.
Six point two?
Yes.
A motion to direct the superintendent as discussed in closed session.
Do we have a motion to approve?
A motion, second.
We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes six oh. If there is no further business, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Do we have a second? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you everyone. This meeting is adjourned.